Okay. This is the Mendon Select Board. We are going to call the meeting to order at 5:33. Adding or deleting items to the agenda. We are going to add the reappointment of representative to the Otter Creek CUD Governing. Is that written correctly? Board?
It's Otter Creek Communication Union District Appointment.
Okay. The Otter Creek Communication Union District Appointment. And the appointment of an alternate.
Yes.
For one year. That's the alternate for one year, correct?
According to Larry, it's for both of them. We have to do it annually, so both of them for one year.
Okay. The Rutland City Fire, Rutland County Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement. And the approval of the liquor license for the Red Clover Inn. Is that everything?
So just to clarify, at the conclusion of the Select Board meeting, we will be opening the meeting for the Liquor Control Board. You will do that in a separate meeting. So you want to go through the whole agenda for the Select Board, adjourn the Select Board meeting, call the Liquor Control meeting to order, and we'll discuss the liquor license for the Red Clover Inn.
Okay.
Well, just one more thing before you approve the agenda. We're going to table the approval of the minutes from 4/24 because Seth and Val were at that meeting, not Lisa, so we'll just table that. And if you just second and approve that motion, we can move on.
All right. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the added items and the deletion or the tabling of the approval of minutes from 4/24 to 23.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So under Administrative Matters, the signing of orders. Should I approve them first before we sign them? We've had time to look at these beforehand?
Yes.
So I make a motion, I make the tables here. Make a motion to approve the check warrant in the amount of $10,943.4. Is it just the one?
Maybe?
I think it is. Okay. Here it is. It's in the back. Thank you. And a payroll check warrant in the amount of $11,069.32.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right in the back here.
Thank you.
Sarah, do you mind if I put last meeting's minutes in that folder? Or is that only for payroll?
Yeah, I think we'll move over and we'll just keep them for next time.
Okay. And we're tabling the minutes. Next, our announcements. Do we have any announcements?
I have none.
Anything, Sarah?
Not today. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to public comment. We have no one here in the room.
And I have nobody in attendance online with their hands up.
Okay. Moving on to business. Letter A, playground installation costs.
I have to just send an email to the company and get that final cost from them.
So Lisa, just to recap what was discussed at the last meeting, the Select Board did decide on the Miracle quote to order those supplies. It looks like from the detail of the quote that the basic installation was $6,000 and included in that price, but we didn't know what the additional cost would be for the company to install the whole thing and not require those volunteers. Then there was also some questions about the cement work that would need to be done. It was not included in the quote in either one of them. So is that something that they would be able to do or would we have to hire outside contractor for that? And if so, then we can start looking at contractors for that installation. Did they provide specs on exactly where they need to go?
I don't think Miracle had any of that information, as far as I know. I will put that in there, ask for cement work. I believe mulch was not included.
Mm-hmm.
So, right, you want a complete total price, right down to the...
Mulch.
Yeah, right down to the mulch and the edging.
Right. Right down to the mulch. Yeah, so the kids can start playing on it. So if it's not work that they provide, then we can start looking at a different company to do that part of the work.
Right. I don't know if they even do... The prep work for the property, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll last all of that.
Were we looking to have mulch as the...
Oh, tree pipe. Yeah. So the material underneath the playground, there is different materials you can use. Most playgrounds in Vermont use the mulch, but it has to be a structural grade approved mulch. It's not just regular mulch.
Okay. All right. Anything else there? Can move on to B, hiring procedures.
At the last meeting, I also provided an outline and overview of the material that Lisa obtained from BLCT. And so what we're in the process now, I just wanted to, you know, bring it to the attention again. Now that Lisa is available, we should set up a meeting to go over the hiring procedures and the policies. Where we stood at the last meeting was also determining the range of salary positions as compared to the budget. So I'd like to go over that with you as a member of the Hiring Committee and just outline for the Select Board approval, you know, where we can start, once we advertise, what's the range going to be. So this is something that I want to try to get completed by the end of the week, so we should get together on schedule.
Yeah. We'll do that after the meeting, I'm guessing.
Yep.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, we can do that in the meeting.
Good.
Yep, perfect. And Val, do you have any questions on that?
I don't. I don't. I will forward you whatever I've gotten from the other towns.
Okay, great.
Okay. So we have the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
And the Transportation Alternative Council.
Can you repeat that because I was saying something at the same time.
Yeah, no, I think that's wrong. The Transportation should... Is it Advocacy Council?
Says Advisory Committee Certification.
Advisory Council. I'm sorry.
No, don't.
That totally slipped my mind on what the name of that council was, but it's also, it's facilitated through the Regional Planning Commission.
Yep.
We have appointed Larry on, well, he's been our representative for multiple years on that committee. We had originally appointed for a three-year term.
Yep.
But they, so all you need to do is sign those two pieces of paper tonight.
Okay.
So those are just the forms, the appointment forms that we have to submit to Regional Planning Commission, but in March you make those appointments.
Same with the Planning Commission, that's all?
Yeah, RRPC and the TAC, the next order of business when we talk about the Otter Creek, that's something separate.
Okay. So I'm signing.
We typically do not have an alternate on these two committees because Larry is a very engaged and diligent representative. He does attend those meetings.
So nothing verbal needs to be done with the appointment?
No, because you have already, you've already made a motion to appoint.
Oh, was this...
So all you need to do is... Now, do you mind if I start an explanation of the Otter Creek Communication Union District?
No, thank you.
So, you know, this is a little bit of a background information for Lisa. About two years ago, multiple Rutland County towns created the Otter Creek Communications Union, Unified Union District. Did I put that right on it? It's the Otter Creek Communications Union, Unified Union District. So we usually, we typically have two representatives for this committee. The first is Larry Chrisell, which has been a volunteer since the district was created. And Dick Wilcox from the Select Board was the backup to Larry. So with looking at the different expertise on the Select Board, I was wondering, Val, if you wanted to step in that role as being the alternate. He would just let you know if he needed anything from you.
That's fine.
Because he's the one that attends those meetings.
That's fine.
Yeah. So, and this is for broadband expansion in Rutland.
No, I would like that. I would like to know more about that anyway.
Yep. So we had previously appointed Larry for a three-year term. However, based on state statute, he can only be appointed for a one-year term. So I would like you to reappoint Larry to a one-year term on the OCC, the Otter Creek Unified Union.
District Governing Board.
District, yep. And then appoint Val as a one-year term for the alternate.
Okay. Do you want me to let Lisa do that?
Yeah, Lisa, you could lead that one, so she'll second it.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Larry Chrisell for a one-year term as the main person for the Otter Creek Communications Union District Governing Board, and Val Taylor for the alternate.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was one of the topics at the town meeting. People wanted to know more about it. When? When is it coming?
Yes, because she's going to execute that first thing tomorrow morning because there is a meeting tomorrow night that we want him to be the voting number on, so she's going to handle that.
Okay. Okay. So we will adjourn this meeting?
No, we just have a couple more subjects that we added to the agenda.
Oh.
So the next one up above was the Rutland City Fire. I just wanted to give you a heads up and a little bit of an explanation for Lisa that this is the first time she's hearing about our... We contract with Rutland City to provide fire protection in Mendon. That is done under a contract, and that is based on every time they come to Mendon, they, we are charged $750 per call. In the contract, there are some exemptions to that fee that we've agreed to pay actual costs based on the severity of the event. So if there was a long-term accident, has that spill on Route 4 or in Mendon, brush fires that would require additional time, and it's just a long-term event above four hours is what their definition is. So we recently had a fire on Old Stockbridge Path that required those additional hours, so we will be getting an additional bill from Rutland City Fire Department for those costs in addition. I have gone over the details with Chief Lovett, and everything seems reasonable, and we haven't made it to the end of the year, but it looks like we'll be close to budget if they're going over just 40. Yeah, it depends on how many more calls we have between now and the end of the year, but it's not going to be exorbitant prices. I didn't want to throw a number out at you because he's still finalizing that bill, but that's the status of that particular call.
So it's 750 per call, up to 3 hours and 59 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
And really, if it was four and a half hours, they probably wouldn't go to the actual cost actually.
Right.
This rarely happens. This rarely happens, and I do have to, you know, to say that they were up there an extraordinary amount of time, at least with monitoring and then assisting in the investigation from the state.
Okay.
So that was just an explanation. I wanted to give you that a heads up, it's coming. And we do like to try to get as many calls paid for by the end of June, so they're included in this fiscal year.
Okay.
The next subject was the Rutland County Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement. This is typically adopted when we adopt the Local Emergency Management Plan, which we did at the last meeting, and this was an oversight that we didn't approve this. This document is, was facilitated, the preparation of it was facilitated through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and really is a mutual aid agreement similar to fire that we would go help other towns and vice versa, we can ask them to come help us in the event of a disaster where their town may not have been affected. And with this pre-approved contract, it allows everybody to be reimbursed from FEMA in an efficient way. So this agreement put in place ahead of time is a way for us to do emergency management planning as a county. For example, during Tropical Storm Irene, when it came up here, we had two other towns that came and assisted us that day without approval from their Select Board. So this would be preapproval from the Select Board, up to the road commissioners' decision on whether or not we could, if they could handle sending crews or equipment, and it allows for reimbursement through the, if there's a disaster, for their use of the equipment.
Okay.
And personnel.
Is there a...
So that's it. I'm not called.
Do we take an inventory every year for this? Is there a list or...
So as part of this, we provide a list of equipment that would be available, and so it gets attached to that as an index.
Okay.
So once we know what towns have approved it, then we'll try and, there's detailed contact information that, and there's a form, a request form. So everything's done in writing, even at the time of the event. It's an emergency, so things happen very quickly, but we're able to respond. There's a form to fill out on what equipment we've approved to send. Most likely, we will send it with our operator because we're used in the equipment. They're probably good with personnel as well. So that agreement is attached to the back of the overall agreement as well as, so then as an appendix is what type of material we typically have stockpiled and what tire equipment was. So they would have that and say, oh, Mendon's got a loader, we can call that.
So we sign at the requesting official signature?
Yes. No, that form, the overall contract, I think I have it slide.
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah, you sign that one. The next form is just the template for what we would use in the event of a disaster. And you send that to the adjoining town or the other, the sending town for you. The other thing is FEMA has a preapproved rate, cost per hour with operator, so that's the rates that are charged. So that's not a question either, is the FEMA approved rate.
Okay.
So Val, we just need a motion to adopt.
Aye.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt the Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement. Is that enough?
Yes, the Rutland County Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement, yes.
The Rutland County...
Public Works.
Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement.
I second it.
Thank you.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I think you, if there's no other business, you can adjourn and call the Liquor Control meeting to order.
We'll adjourn the Select Board meeting at 5:58.
I second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And call to order the Liquor Control Board meeting. Do you want for approval of the Clover Inn liquor license?
Yes. So could you read me, they usually have a Doing Business ad on their form. So is it a company named Doing Business as the Red Clover Inn?
Works Department.
Maybe Nancy has it in a separate folder? It should be multiple pages, but, you know, I don't know. Four or five.
Aye, maybe.
Yeah, you could drive that. In this time, I'll try and get a hold of her.
I don't want to read any of that. Okay.
Does she slide where you need to sign? Usually, there's a couple different places you need to sign those. I'm going to see if I can get a hold of her, like, well...
Is this a renewal or a new license?
Well, they've had their license for a number of years, but there's new owners, and they have gotten licenses in the past, but they, I'm not sure if they had them last year. It's kind of on and off. They were not doing business for a little while.
The only thing, there is no information under like the foundational license. Well, it says if applicable. License type, name, number, status. But it's filled in up at the top, the entity type. I mean, I do see... And that was signed by Mark Allen. And on the last page, payment and acknowledgement. Says signed by, and there's a blank. Says signed by and there's a blank.
Did you happen to notice, Val, on those pages whether there's a company name and then doing businesses?
Besides the Red Clover?
Yeah. One.
No, it just says Red Clover Inn, Red Clover Inn. Right?
No, it's all the Red Clover.
Was it supposed to be under a different company?
No, not necessarily. I just wanted to make sure that if they had a different company name, that we put that in the motion. But if they're doing business as the Red Clover, then I'm...
There's Red Clover Services Incorporated.
Yep, that's it. Red Clover Services Inc. Doing Business as the Red Clover Inn. Okay, perfect. So your motion would be to approve the liquor license for Red Clover Services Inc. Doing Business as the Red Clover Inn.
Okay.
And if you're prepared to do that, then you can just say so moved.
Say what?
So moved.
Oh, and there's been no issues with this company or anything, right? They... Okay. So who makes the motion?
Yeah, Heather. So she just did. So a second is on the table. But if you second it, then I can do some further discussion before we pass it.
I will second.
Or before we vote on it.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Well, the State of Vermont does a background check. You know, and they do the background information check on whether these people should be granted a liquor license. At the local level, if we were having issues at the establishment within town, then that's a reason why you may not approve a liquor license at the local level.
So under payment and acknowledgement? That's the only place that says signed by?
Yeah, I'm not really familiar with those forms.
Well, I can wait, I can come back in.
But if you make a motion to approve, right, you can come back in and sign where you need to sign. There should be multiple lines, up to like five or six because some board numbers are, some Select Boards are five number fours.
Yeah, there's nothing like that?
All right, so I'm just wondering if those are the actual forms you need to sign because I... And they could have changed over the last few years, but I recall them having multiple...
Yeah, I won't...
At least two places for the board to sign. And it had multiple lines, up to five, because they, it might be a five number four. So you can still approve the liquor license and then follow up with Nancy on the paperwork.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second on the table.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then you can adjourn the Liquor Control Board meeting.
Okay, we will adjourn the Liquor Control Board meeting at 6:07.
And that's it? So most of your meetings have been adjourned?